I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carey, will they carry you back? All of them, just like you missed one over here. Dr. Merrill, turn it over here.
Thank you. Now, Ken, we're going right away, Ken.
Mr. Perry, are you turning your computer on or not on? It's not on, yeah.
The amount on here.
Good morning, all. Thank you for having me on short notice for this special purpose.
Yeah, okay. Status report. Wanted to try and bring you up to speed on what we see and some of the issues we're facing. So take a little bit of time here, try and keep it high level to the extent possible, and go from there. I'm intentionally holding copies back right now. I'll have a set for you when we're finished, so. Okay. Some of the challenges that we've seen, that we're facing. Assembling records from two key vacancies. Perhaps not everyone knows that the finance officer position is vacant as well. And so documents and materials related to both superintendentcy and finance officer, we're working on. The reconciliation of all funds and accounts. I think you got a bit of a look at maybe some practice here in Wayne County on finances based on the Reeves Audit. But it's difficult still to be certain what balances are on some of those. We are still authorizing the payment of some bills. They've been on hold for a couple of weeks because weren't sure of the status. And so with that constant movement, it's really hard to say, here's the exact balance at this point. Almost unheard of to have the magnitude of this financial issue with about three weeks left in the fiscal year. Sometimes districts in mid-year, December, January, December, they're in trouble. And they've got about six months to pull some levers and make some adjustments. Very, very difficult to do so in a short period of time. The communication around this has been difficult. Everyone seems to have an opinion and know what's going on. In effect, it's also hard to say, this is exactly what we're seeing right now, as I said before, with some of the balances. But this is the first probably of many times when I'll be trying to share with you what we see, what we know. I'm hoping that we can build a budget, as you'll see in a minute, to start effective July 1st. And it will have a budget work session with you again in June. And perhaps we can delay the board meeting, but the chair will work with you on that in a little bit. You know, the uncertainty in responding to constant change. The communication we get from the state around COVID, around various new forms of funding, often change. Guidelines on use, flexibility, so it's interesting to try and keep up with that. Employing community expectations. You know, folks expect to be taken care of. Quite right. The community expects it to be managed and handled. And the community really doesn't care what the problems are. They just want it done and done correctly. And we get that. I mean legitimately so. And then the last one, speed inhibits collaboration. In order, the short few weeks we have left in June and things we need to do, or over the next two weeks when we're looking at how to balance a budget and fill in those deficits. I'm sorry, I turned back from you. It will be really hard to involve a lot of people and collaborate the way I would normally like to do it because we're up against such a timeline and tight deadlines. And so that's just a crunch we've got to face. It's not the way I like it, but they are inversely related. The faster you've got to go, the often the less you can collaborate effectively. What we know at this point, the Reeves Audit shared our deficits for 1819, and they're a matter of record. You had that, documents everywhere, many pages, a lot of information. Ascertaining accurate 1920 year-end account balances has been difficult. In many cases, the data are not yet firm. I've already made reference to this. That's why they call it closeout. We're still looking at payments. If we've got a large supplement payment, we've got a payroll, we've got bills that are paid, need to be paid. We have contracts that need to be finished for work that has been done. And the reason external auditors come in in the fall is, if you think about it, you've already been closed out for two or three months. It's much easier to do an accounting after everything's over than to do it right in the middle of closeout, which is sort of what we're trying to do right now in a short period of time. Budget department tools and information is very scarce, the departments in the system. There aren't a lot of documents. There aren't a lot of spreadsheets for managers to work from. And that's been part of the systemic problems. Certainly addressable, but this is what we're finding. There are very few staff who are well-versed in budgeting and finance. The folks in finance right now are plowing through things like Trojans and just really working at getting things straight. And I appreciate their dedication to that. Top management, however, leadership team and others, weren't involved in building a budget. Really have very little experience in the Xs and Os, if you will, the ins and outs of financing. And so through no fault of their own, regrettably, when I turn to them now and say, okay, you need to find cuts in order to build next year's balanced budget, it's relatively new experience for them. We're getting there. It's work to be done. There's a lot of learning and teaching going on right now, but I wanted to let you know that. The magnitude of the deficits when building a balanced budget for 2021 will be painful and call for sacrifice, tolerance, and compromise. Sacrifice, tolerance, and compromise. I have said that the last thing I want to do is affect employees. But with the size of the deficits, it may be very difficult to avoid touching employees. Can't be certain of that yet. More to follow. But whether it's four or five million or whatever it is we're trying to come up with to balance for the start of the year, we are looking at everything, and you will see that. Immediate issues to solve. We need funds for the teacher supplement, which is due Tuesday, and for the final year-end payroll, which goes out on the 25th. And then secondly, and I call these immediate development of the balanced 2021 budget. And I apologize, I had some time scheduled for some of you individually, and I just needed to kick that off and delay it a little bit. I will get to you. But these are priorities right now. And leadership team has pretty much cleared their calendars for the next couple of weeks so that we can be working on this. Midterm issues, a little more breathing room. That top one worth its weight in gold, seeking a new finance officer. You don't just run an ad, get 45 applicants, and then pick the best one. For this kind of position in public school work in North Carolina, very, very difficult to find qualified people. That's going to be a big challenge. Do want to spend some time looking at potential sources and ways to increase revenue. Conceivably grants, for instance. There could be some practices here where we could change some things. This is all part of looking at the revenue side of finance and not always just looking at the expenditure side. So we will be seeing if we can't find some more sources there. We're going to have to be communicating the impact and the consequences of the balancing. Clearly, midterm, I mean you'll be part of this, it will be here, others will see it. But I ask you now in advance, to a certain extent, tighten your seat belts because there's going to be a need to say no to some things, which I don't think you're surprised to hear, but wanted to reaffirm that. Probably be a good idea if we could try and set up regular meetings between commissioners and school board. It's a good practice. Sometimes folks do it quarterly, might do it monthly. But anytime you can get together and break bread and do some business and develop relationships much more positive and productive in the long run. Because positions are frozen, we will have to have a process, which we've not yet developed because they're all just frozen, for reviewing critical need vacancies. There are some you just can't not fill. I mean if there is one person who is in charge of spraying for infestations in a school, something like that, you've got to fill that, for instance. So there will be a methodical review by staff to look at key positions. You can't just lock the door and say it doesn't matter who disappears. But to the extent possible, there will be some money to gain through current frozen positions. And I know it'll be an important piece as we continue into the next budget year, to continue to collect revenue from vacancies. And then finally, you know, I talk about a system-wide mindset. When you have to be frugal, then lots of times creativity will increase. And I know we'll be asking more of our teachers and our school-based administrators and our parents and our kids to, to a certain extent, be more productive, do better, probably with less. And so people do respond well in situations like that. I think America has done a pretty good job of dealing with this virus. There are some squeaky points around national COVID and everything else. But by and large, folks do rise to the occasion, and I'm confident that Wayne County will do so as well. Longer-term issues, repayment solutions for any indebtedness we incur, you know, in order to make these payments or building next year's budget, whatever we need to do. Plenty of guidelines and policies need to be set up as we go forward. There is a lot that is not here that would guide departmental staff, as well as school-based folks and everything else, and probably even the board to a certain extent, around guidelines and policies. So that we will be working on that. And then adherence to it, I mean if you, just because you write them, I mean if you don't really follow them or live by them, then you wasted a lot of time writing policy or regulation. So a lot of standardized practices need to be established and institutionalized so that when your next superintendent's here, your next finance officer, to a certain extent, they've walked into some already good practices and can pick up and continue. And likely when you are looking at hiring your next superintendent, these are the kinds of things you'll be questioning in interviews, if it's not background, adherence to this, the importance of it, everything else. And then all, which is so easy to forget why we're here in the first place when you get all stuck with dollar signs, but it is about services for kids, every child. And can we, how and we will, continue to serve all our kids while restoring a budget that's deep right now and needs some work. Plan for solving the immediate issue. Make payments for the supplement and the end-of-month payroll from state funds. I've been in conversation with financial services at DPI, and I think we have a way where we can work with the state. I'll need a lot of assistance from them. Ultimately, I think I'll probably be working with the State Board of Education as well and the Finance Services Division at the state. But by going this route, it means we will not need to seek assistance right now from the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. That we will look to state funds for the solution right now. Benefits to this, there are many, but let me mention a few. The magnitude of the state budget allows greater opportunity to secure dollars from state accounts for current payments and repayment. If I've got one account that has 100 million in it, and I've got another that has 20 million, and I've got to come up with X amount, I've got a lot more room within 100 million to look at different fund sources to cover the X amount than I do in a smaller amount of 20 million, let's say. So it gives me greater operating room to be working from a larger budget, which is the state budget. Regrettably, DPI and the State Board have assisted other districts in financial distress. And so I've looked at some of the materials that another district has had to work on. There are some procedures, reasonable, but there are documents, all of which you'll be involved in and you'll see and you'll have. But that's a lot of what will need to be worked out over the next several weeks with DPI and financial staff. Really pleased that we're relieving the county of any burden right now. Really difficult, I think, for us to have gone to them and hope that they could help us. But I do want to thank them for their willingness to be able to try and help us out and provide assistance. But I think it's great for Wayne County that right now we don't have to ask the county to add a burden to help us out. And that we can try and swim our way out of this with the state, and so right now. But I do want to recognize that the county was at the ready and am appreciative of that. Next steps, immediately process supplements, process payroll, finish the 1920 year-end closeout, as you heard, starting to pay those bills that have been sitting for a week or two. I had mentioned to you that short-term temporarily, I've asked David Lewis to serve as an interim finance officer for signature purposes. And so he and I have formalized signatures with BB&amp;T so that we can process checks, we can make payments, things of that nature. And he and I are scrutinizing everything that's there, as you would expect. I think a few of you heard me yesterday in one of the committee presentations saying, yeah, okay, but I'm going to look at that money also when it's coming in. And also any new money that comes from the state, we need to maximize the flexible possibilities there. And then technical requirements from the staff at DPI. I could be spending time up there. There may be some visitation here. But I know some of those folks, they're good, they're talented, and they've been here before. Not necessarily here, but I mean they've been in this before, and they can help folks. And then also trying to get the balanced budget over to the county by the end of the month. I've not talked to Mr. Honeycutt about his absolute deadline. I know we're already late by a month. But we also don't have a state budget either. And in talking to finance recently, maybe it will come sooner since it's an election year and folks want to go ahead and get it done and sort of get out of town if they can. But we're waiting. We have planning numbers from the state, but they're not firm. So we don't have the state budgets yet either. I will work with the county manager on receiving our budget as late as we can possibly get it to them. If he can give me what he intends to appropriate to us, and if it's flat or same as last year, or maybe a few dollars more to try and cover increased benefits or hospitalization, whatever it might be, then we can build around that, and he could put his together as well, so. That's really all I've got. I say all I've got. It's actually quite a bit. But I wanted to try and give you the layout here. I don't think at this point, because we don't need assistance from the commission, that I need to go over and speak with commissioners at one. I'll call Mr. Honeycutt when we're finished, and he may determine that they can cancel their meeting unless he's got other business. But otherwise, it's Friday afternoon. Checks need to hit Tuesday. So I'm going to go back upstairs and see how we're doing on the supplement. I'm confident that we can make that supplement, and I'm confident that we can make end-of-year payroll as well. So to the extent that our employees hear that, that was job one that you folks made very, very clear to me. So I can try and answer questions of you or Mr. Chair, how you'd like to go from here.
Thank you, Dr. Merrill. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Merrill about the presentation? Ms. Board?
Not specifically about the presentation, but I asked this question earlier, and I want some clarification because you made the point that finding a new finance officer is just not putting out a notice, receiving 45 applications, interviewing, and hiring one. Is there a significant difference in someone that has worked in a firm as CPA and working educationally?
I have a bias, but I think there's a huge difference. And even someone who's worked in government finance, when you come to school finance, it's even more complicated. And it is what it is. We get funds from all directions, and the associated requirements for sub-funds within state, within federal, whatever it might be, are pretty rigorous. And so there's a lot of training that's required. Finance officers in North Carolina are constantly going through training because things are constantly changing. And you saw the impact of the GASB requirement on benefits. And that's at a national accounting level. So it's going on all the time. It is difficult, and you can't, I just don't think you could hire someone from a private firm or an accounting firm, or even state government, and just bring them in and say, okay, good, go ahead. There's still a lot of ramp-up that has to be done. One of the things I was talking about recently with someone is the need, you know, if we can get this straightened out some in the next few months, we've got to also have a plan to sustain the new person and support and train as they go along. Otherwise, we'll roll back, right back in where we were. So that's, I didn't really mention it specifically, but that's in my mind as well, that we've got to have a training and support for the next person.
Any other questions for Dr. Merrill? Mr. Henderson?
I don't have any questions, but I do, I would like to make some comments relative to the presentation. First of all, I would like for you to possibly look at ways to strengthen oversight by this board as it relates to financial matters, particularly looking at issues such as financial statements and getting them in the time that matters so that we can always be somewhat more abreast as to what our financial status is. The second thing I would say to you is that with all of this that's going on, the public is very negative, or has us as a board in a very negative light. So I would hope that we can begin to look at some processes that might strengthen our public's perception of us as a board as it relates to financial management. And I would actually ask you to look at the practices that have been in place as it relates to our knowledge of financial matters as a board as it relates to Policy 8300 or fiscal management, to see if the practices that are outlined in policy are actual practices that are being followed.
Briefly, makes a lot of sense. There are some simple monthly documents that ought to be coming to the board on a regular basis. All of you now, I think, will know that either in November or December, you should be seeing an audit somewhere. And so happy to do that. We'll look at 8300. I'll work with Katie and others. But makes a lot of sense. Happy to work on that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Falk? Again, I'm piggybacking on what Mr. Henderson said. The one, to make sure everybody's clear, we're not the first school district to be in this position. That it's probably a statewide problem, I would assume, financial problems going throughout the state. Want to make sure everybody understands our Wayne County Commissioners were set to step up and make sure that our staff and teachers and all were going to be taken care of, and they need to be thanked for them wanting to step up and take care of us. And the other thing is, because that's what I, I was one of the ones that was on Dr. Merrill saying, we had to make these supplements because I hear it daily from, well, my wife, who's a teacher, and, you know, other emails and Facebook and everywhere, are you going to get to make supplement? Are you going to pay our supplement? We do our supplement. And so I'm glad to hear, you're going to get your supplement, and you're going to get your paycheck at the end of the month. And then just to piggyback, I was going to say, I hope that from here going forward, we'll start getting monthly reports on our finances so that we're a more informed board of the finances and not just relying on a finance officer to tell us, yeah, everything's okay, you're fine. Because that's what I've heard for the year I've been on this board, is everything's fine, you're good. Move forward, what you want to do, we're good. And I'd like to see it from now on.
I think we can probably pump up the finance committee too, and put a lot of things in there that would make sense. And you're right. Other districts do struggle. And it's a matter of talent, I think, and the ability to compensate. And it is a little frightening to think of how many districts may be on the edge of something like this right now. We just don't know it. But thanks for your comments.
Any other, Mr. Henderson?
Chris, I got one. Just a question, clarification. I did read an article where the county commissioners were actually looking at their budget, and they were looking at potential cuts. And one of the areas that I saw was that they were looking at possibly doing a half a million dollar cut out of our small capital outlet budget, which is two million, which we've always said has not been adequate enough. Are you familiar with any discussions about that?
I'm not yet, no, no. Haven't heard anything from their side on their budget.
Any other comments, questions for Dr. Merrill? I would like to say one thing. I'm not speaking individually because we are a board. I would just like to make it very clear to every employee in Wayne County Public Schools that the board's number-one priority was to make sure that supplements and June payrolls were made. I know we've had some that said individually that was their goal. It's the goal of the board, and it was the number-one priority of the Wayne County Board of Education, that our supplements be paid, our contract EC people be paid, and our June payroll be paid. So I just wanted to make that very clear. That's the board's wishes, and that was our collective wish from the start. I think we made that, as Dr. Merrill said, we made that very clear to him. That was our, the board's number-one priority. So I just wanted to make that clear. Anything else for Dr. Merrill? If nothing else, need a motion to adjourn.
Receptivity to moving the Monday meeting?
I'm sorry. I got that. June 22nd, we need to move that board meeting, if you would check your calendars, to June 29th. the 29th, which will give them some more time to get some work done that they need done. Is everybody good with that? Mr. Henderson? Mr. Latham?
Yes.
Dr. Demaco?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move our June meeting, our June meeting to June 29th instead of 22nd. Ms. Cornetto, so you got that?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Anything else, Dr. Merrill?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, please.
Do we have to do the approval of the agenda to make sure we're?
I'm sorry, we didn't approve the agenda. A motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Now.
Ms. Board, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, Board, at this time, I'd like to call today's meeting to order. We're going to reconvene today's meeting. We had one oversight on administrative issue that I'm going to refer to our legal counsel and she will help us with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and apologies to the board. There is one additional item that we needed to address in the meeting today. And pursuant to 115C-439, facsimile signatures need to be authorized by you all for Dr. Merrill to continue to conduct business. And so if it's possible, if we, if the chair will entertain a motion and a vote.
Okay. So do I have a motion? Mr. Henderson?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board authorized Dr. Merrill to have facsimile authorization.
Yes.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.